I'd like to call this regular meeting of the King George Board of Supervisors to order. We'd start with an invocation by Mr. Granger and a pledge of allegiance. Mr. Miller, are there any amendments to the agenda this evening?
Yes, sir. Under number five or 0512B, we won't have department reports. It was going to have community development and emergency service give you kind of a little bit more intensive dive into their departments. But Ms. Hall's has a illness in the family and Chief Moody is also ill tonight and just asked to be excused. We'll just schedule that at another meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, may I also make a recommendation for another amendment?
Yes, go ahead.
So I would, I would go ahead and move to amend the agenda per Mr. Miller's suggestion, striking 512B as well. I respectfully move that we change the order of the public hearings for this evening, that the public hearing B regarding the VDOT presentation be moved to A, so that one goes first, and public hearing regarding calendar year 2022 proposed tax rates would be the second public hearing.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion properly seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion passes. I will now open the floor up to public comment. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person in order to afford everyone an opportunity to speak. If comments relate to a specific public hearing item, we ask that you offer those comments at the time of the public hearing. When you come up, please state your name and address. Anyone like to come up for public comment?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
I will mention the word.
Ah, thank you very much, sir. I will mention the word assessments with the subheading of "we didn't get what we paid for." Bright Minds. It breached several of its contract terms with the county. It did not follow even Virginia's state assessment standards. This calls their final determinations into question. Anecdotally, I can tell you, I don't know of anyone who had an onsite visit with an assessor. I don't know of anyone who found a doorknob hanger so they could contact the assessor. Both were geared to enable us property owners to provide update, relevant property information before the final determination. Anecdotally, I can tell you of folks who spoke to the assessor who referred to photos that did not reflect their current property. With this in mind, let's move forward with our current valuations, but let's bring back Bright Minds, have them do the work they paid for, that they were paid for, and have them finally do it correctly. I thank you for your time and your consideration.
Anyone else for general public comment? Ms. Lavelle.
Hi, my name is Anna Maria Lovell. I live in King, 10 to 60 Roosevelt, King George, Virginia. First, I want to thank the supervisors and the county administrator for the service to the community. For the service to the community. Well, I want to talk about the budget, which is very important to me and the rest of the community. Well, people are complaining about why it takes so long to complete. I understand that it's complicated. My question is, do you have professional help, like a CPA to complete it? The people of King George want to know. Much of their tax bill will be next year. The property values countywide have increased by almost 40% after last year reassessment. But members of the board have stressed that the advertised tax rate of 68 cents for the real estate and 3.25 cents for personal property are too high. They expected the county to get funding from the state. What happened in the county does not get help from the state. Well, I want to understand that many people have moved into this county in past years because the taxes were low in this county. I would like to ask the supervisors to work to keep our taxes low in King George. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lavelle. Anyone else for public comment? Mrs. Hart.
Good evening, board members. Mr. Miller, I live, I'm Judy Hart. I live at 7558 Musco Place. Right now, we have 47 houses on our road. It's about a mile long. It's roughly 26 feet wide, give or take. There's a cul-de-sac at the end of the road, so it's one way in and one way out. The traffic right now is very heavy. So if you figure at least two cars per household, and some of them have more than that, but if you figure two per household, that's 94 vehicles. And then you figure some of them have a third and a fourth vehicle. Then you throw in the school buses, four buses a day that comes in and goes out, the mailman, the FedEx, the Amazon truck, UPS driver, and two trash trucks. That brings our count up to way over 128. I just spoke with David from VDOT. He says they continue, they consider 10 trips per day per house. So Westbrook Homes has purchased 60 acres at the end of our lovely little street, and we understand that there could be as many as 40-plus homes built there. So that would make the count about 870 vehicles traveling in and out in a day, if I got that right, David. I hope I did. And that counts probably on the low side, because you've got to figure on visitors coming. So most of the family on our road walk with their children. They ride their bikes, and a lot of them jog. We get these more houses on our road. A lot of that's going to have to stop. I, myself, and my husband play with our grandchildren, and we walk up and down the road. The speed limit is not posted, so that means it's 55, and that is too fast on that windy, narrow road. It needs to be 25. It should be posted. I have spoken to most of the residents on Musco Place, and those that I have spoken to aren't excited about this development. And I know there's probably not much that can be done, because according to the code, everything's falling into place for this. But perhaps as a board, maybe the county ordinance can be changed to stop some of this growth and some of these larger developments from coming in on nice, peaceful roads where we enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hart. Anyone else?
I'm Claudette Jordan. I live in Lesbey, Maryland, president of the Ralph Bunch Alumni Association. So we're here again to thank the county for all the good work that you've done and supporting the refurbishing of our school, despite what's in the paper that's belligerent and saying you're not doing this or that. Rome wasn't built in a day, and none of the boards are the same. This is a good board, and we appreciate that. We work with organizations that have high morals and integrity and standards. So we do work with a lot of organizations. I just wanted to refer to Mr. Miller's comment that talked about sitting down hand in hand and working it out. Mr. Miller's new to the area and really does know the backstory, but we have tried to work with other agencies, the one that's reported in the paper, the Stonehill Group. And very honestly, in the 47-year history of the Ralph Bunch Alumni Association, only one person has been expelled from our association. That person's Marsha Stonehill. So in terms of her leadership and what she does and what she says, it will be a breach of our own standards and ethics to affiliate with that group. We have always done and worked with the county and other groups here in the county. We continue to do so. So I just wanted to thank you for all of your support and the work that you're doing, and also to ask you to support Mr. Miller as he brings forth the vendor to do the roof on Ralph Bunch. He and his staff have done a good job with that, so we're asking you to vote yes to what he brings to you tonight. Thank you.
Okay, seeing none. Mr. Dine, is anyone online for general public comment? Okay, at this point, we will close public comment and move on to reports of members of the board. Mrs. Bender?
I will try to keep mine brief for the fact that we got a long night. I want to thank everyone who came and spoke in front of us to share their concerns, and I also want to thank everyone who hasn't spoken yet, and excuse my voice, anybody that hasn't spoken yet for coming out and coming to speak to us tonight on our items that are on our agenda. Two things I wanted to mention, I really want to appreciate our Economic Development Authority for putting on a nice business appreciation reception. We had some great conversation with some of the business owners in our community and the constituents who were out there at the event at Back Porch Winery. And then on Saturday, I attended the King George Alliance Impact King George event at the Smoot Library. We had a lot of vendors there, and I got to speak to Ms. Tamika Howard. Sheriff Giles was also there, and it was a very interesting conversation, and I appreciate the work she's doing in our community to help a lot of groups that need a little bit of assistance. And I look forward to having future conversations with her. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Bender. Ms. Granger?
Yes, sir. Thank you to everyone who came out. I missed the name of the first lady with the microphone off, so I apologize, but thank you for the recommendation. Ms. Lavelle, I appreciate your comments about the budget. It's obviously something we've been working on for a number of months, trying to address, obviously, looking at the tax rate and what the budget will look like. Ms. Hart, thank you for your comments upon the road. I don't have really anything I can say in particular at the moment, but I do appreciate the input and something we can look into. No promises, though. And Ms. Jordan, and all the Ralph Bunch Alumni Association members who came and support, I really appreciate the relationship we do have with you. Thank you so much. Thank you for voicing your support of Mr. Miller, for the roof repair in particular, and I think that is something, obviously, that we would like to see accomplished, and so we will be talking about that as well. But thank you for coming out and providing the comment. Other than that, on May 12th, I did attend a comrel meeting, so I'd like to say thank you to all those who attended, and to Captain Copeland in particular. We talked about, Captain Copeland shared some information about base traffic. I'm sure that people have noticed who maybe lived down in the Dogren area, there's more traffic again, as the base has been ramping up and being more onsite, which obviously has an impact to traffic, which can have an impact on our schools and our fire and rescue on that road. And so I know that Captain Copeland has worked very hard, and before him, Captain O'Leary, on trying to address those challenges by providing more ingress, so I really appreciate the relationship we have with them. He also shared some information. At the end of the day, they do have forced protection concerns, and I do respect and appreciate that. And it was under the order of hundreds of potential unauthorized accesses in a month, people trying to come on base that don't have any authorization to do so. And he said they had 22 individuals with felony warrants out that tried to get onto the base in one month. So those obviously are then addressed on the site, but you know, there's people trying to go on base that don't have any authority, and obviously some that really should not be there. So there is a reason that those activities are going on, that they have those checks, and it does cause some traffic. And they work to try to alleviate it, but I really appreciate that relationship we have with them. So I felt that was good information to provide and just kind of understand the challenges they're facing and what they're trying to address. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Granger. Mrs. Cupca.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I want to start by thanking everyone for coming out this evening and joining us. Also, to all those who provided public comment, thank you for doing so. Ms. Bardone, very nice to see you. Haven't seen you here in person for a while. I will say, earlier in the year, the Board of Equalization did notify the county administrator of a desire to have some sort of work session or feedback session with the Board of Supervisors with regards to what they saw during the equalization process, so I'm sure there'll be some more to follow on that. Ms. Lavelle, thank you as always for joining us and providing your input. Ms. Hart, I am tracking the Musco Place development. My understanding is it is two parcels. One parcel is 19 acres, the other parcel is 40 acres. For a combined 59 acres, it is zoned A2, which means it could be subdivisible to two-acre minimum lots. So I think probably you'd be looking more realistically at 30 homes, and it is zoned A2, so that if it's only 30 would be a buyright development and would not require a rezoning from the county. Right now, the parcels have been purchased. The owner owns them, so it would get really sticky for us to try to rezone that right now. I don't think that that would be a possibility, but I am sure our community development staff will work diligently with all departments affected, including VDOT, to review the site plans if they do come to fruition by the developer, and do the right thing for the development as well as the neighborhood. So thank you very much for providing your comment tonight. And Ms. Jordan, and there were six other members of the Ralph Bunch Alumni Association, thank you very much for your comments this evening and voicing your support with regard to awarding a roof contract, hopefully later in the meeting, for Ralph Bunch High School. Reiterate my colleagues' comments. The May 12th Economic Development Authority Small Business Appreciation Dinner was very well received. Thank you to the Economic Development Authority and staff for their work to make it a successful event, to Back Porch Winery for hosting, Mr. Dale Sisson for providing the keynote address, and all of the sponsors who supported it. Congratulations to King George Love Thy Neighbor for your selection as nonprofit of the year, and the Estate at Whitehall Vineyard for your selection as small business of the year. Yesterday evening, I attended the DSS Administrative Board meeting, and this morning, I attended the Rappahannock Regional Criminal Justice Academy Police Week Memorial Service. I was honored to meet the niece of our own deputy Craig L. Brooks, who died in the line of duty on May 15, 1998, as a result of injuries sustained in an automobile accident while on patrol. She was joined by Sheriff Giles in placing a flag and a red rose on the Floral Cross when his name was read during the roll call of fallen officers. Thank you to all of our law enforcement officers for your service and your sacrifice. And lastly, I would like to make our community aware of the passing of longtime employee of Ellie Smoot Memorial Library, library assistant Carol Arnott, who worked at our library for over 25 years. She always greeted library patrons with a smile and was eager to help. She spent a lot of time with children's services, and I know when I brought my twins to the library more often during the summertime, we always enjoyed talking to her and got a great deal of assistance from her. She will be greatly missed. That's all I have. Mr. Chair, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Cupca. Mr. Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Beal, for handling the two constituent issues, the one with the puddling water and the other with the new paving. Also, I have another citizen request from, many citizens request from Fairview in regards to the speed limit dropping to 25, too far down River View, or whatever that name of the road is coming in. There's a lot of residential area before it drops down, and there's been several people that would like for you to look into that speed limit. Another constituent has suggested a dog park, and I don't know what the flavor on the board or if they've ever looked into the matter. Just want to bring that forward.
Mr. Clark has identified that in future year CIP, and so we'll be presenting that to you when we sit down with you about the CIP here in the next two.
Thank you. Constituent asked about the, what's it called, memorial statue?
Yes, sir.
What's it called?
The Confederate monument slash, I don't, there might be an official title.
All references, mostly been monument, but it can be memorial, too.
Where this board is on that, and I think there's going to be something this evening in that. As far as Musco Place, you're correct, Ms. Hart, the speed limit's 25. It's a rural road, and there's a lot of folks that live off of there. And when you go down to the end, there's a cul-de-sac, and the proposal is to go straight through that cul-de-sac, and it's not really appropriate for those many houses on that road at that speed. Also, many of your constituents and neighbors came to the planning commission and spoke of that, and what I heard in that was that it didn't fit the comp plan, and it's not in the settlement area. So if we can look into that and what's going on with that, if that is truly the case. The next thing is the Ralph Bunch Association. So several months ago, there was some discussion about this other group that was advertising for funds, and I guess I should ask Ms. Lackey, what was the conclusion of that matter, and is that still continuing, and what's going on with that? Because the paper appeared that it was still happening. So can we get a comment from her?
Ms. Lackey, I don't know if you heard Supervisor Collins' question?
I did. So for members of the public, I think I just need to repeat what was conveyed in the press article, which is there's no action contemplated at this time between the county and the Arts and Humanities Commission. And it's been very clear that the county has no current agreement, and so at this time, the county's not taking a position as to fundraising activities by any of the interested parties in the Ralph Bunch building, other than to acknowledge the fact there is no standing agreement with any particular organization for use of that building.
Thank you. Could you look further into that in regards to some of the information that I received is that it is not legal for them to be doing that? So I'd like to have an opinion on that, whether that's true or false. I went to the National Day of Prayer. It was a wonderful gathering right out front here. Ms. Gump took care of it this year, and there were many people out praying for our future of our country. I had the opportunity to go to the Economic Development Event, and it was wonderful, and thank you, Mr. Jim.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. I wanted to say thank you for everybody that came out. Certainly appreciate everybody, the people that come out to the meetings to speak. So Ms. Bardone, who had left, but thank you for coming out as well and speaking to us. I was going to say, just thanks for coming out. Okay. All right. Well, thanks for coming out. Ms. Lavelle, thank you always for coming out, and yes, we'll do what we can for the budget, to find balancing act, but we'll do our best. Mrs. Hart, yes, we know that's coming in there, and yes, we can maybe get ahold of Mr. Beal and see about a traffic study, at least on the road, at least for the speed limit aspect of it. Because yes, if it's not posted, it's 55, so see what we can do on that for you. Ms. Jordan, and thanks for coming from Maryland to come speak to us and having your staff here. And yes, it's a great thing that we're going to get this roof taken care of for Ralph Bunch and get everything, hopefully, watertight there. Thursday, the 12th, I also attended the comrel meeting down in Colonial Beach with Mr. Granger. That was actually my first in-person meeting there at comrel, and say thanks to Mayor Schick and the whole town of Colonial Beach for hosting us down at High Tides, and for NSWC and staff, and Captain Copeland for being down there. Also attended the business appreciation dinner, which was really great, and thanks for Mr. Minor and his staff, and a big thanks to Back Porch Vineyard for hosting it. As we all know, the small businesses here in the county are really important, so it's something that we try to, you know, to push forward and to, you know, we certainly appreciate all of the small businesses. And that's all I have. So closing off for reports, members of the board, we're moving on to 510 for the consent agenda.
Move to adopt the consent agenda as presented.
We have a motion properly seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion passes. Moving on to county official reports, constitutional officers' report. Mr. Jones, maybe? No? Oh. All right, Ms. Hart, come right up.
Thank you. I just would like to let you know that as of today, we have collected $2,075,273.40 in cigarette tax.
That's as of, like, today?
Today.
So.
That's the top dollar today.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Now the treasurer's report, after Mrs. Hart jumped in on you.
Yes, she did. Okay, I'm going to be reading the monthly receipts and expenditures for April. Beginning balance, $29,317,416.40. Receipts were $15,377,183.92. For ending balance of $30,627.24, and this has been reconciled to the general ledger.
Okay, any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Miller, if you can get that added into the minutes, please?
Yes, sir.
Sheriff Giles?
Good evening, Chairman, and members of the board. I wanted to come this morning, or this afternoon, this evening, and give you a quick update on the progress of the radio upgrade project. Last month, Chief Basham and several Motorola representatives toured the county in search of inappropriate existing towers. I'm happy to say that they found three existing tower sites that will work without purchasing additional property to build tower sites from scratch, so that'll add to the tower sites that we're already using, which will give us the appropriate coverage throughout the county. Motorola is still about 30 to 45 days before they can have an official proposal done and ready to present to the board. Motorola is crunching the numbers due to the inflation that we are all feeling in an attempt to maintain the original budgetary quote. After signing the contract, it'll roughly be 18 to 24 months for the system to be fully operational. So I can take any questions at this time if anybody has it.
Any questions for Sheriff Giles? Nope. Okay. Thank you. All right. I think we're done with our officials reports and report of county attorney, Mrs. Lackey.
Good evening. I gave a training for the Library Board of Trustees last Thursday. Just kind of a general overview of rights and responsibilities as members of the Board of Trustees. And also I was notified on Friday that my office, which is currently staff of one of me, raised the most funds and food for food banks in Virginia as a government office. The Attorney General's Office runs a food drive through all the public and private law firms and agencies in Virginia. It's typically the last two weeks of April. And so to my surprise, though, King George County Attorney's Office raised the most per capita for the, the food banks of Virginia. There was also awards given for the total amount of funds that were given to food banks. And so I will be able to attend a luncheon at the Attorney General's Office, hopefully sometime in June to celebrate.
Very good. Congratulations on that. And that's all you have?
Mr. Chair.
Thank you. That's all we have.
May I ask the county attorney a question?
Right.
With regard to her report. Madam County Attorney, if you have any correspondence regarding that, would you mind forwarding it to the members of the board, please? With regard to.
On the food drive?
Yes, please.
Sure. Um, I don't, I, they did a virtual presentation, but I'll try to get my hands on a copy of.
Thank you. And then perhaps we can send it on to HR staff and have a blurb in the monthly newsletter. Thank you very much.
Anything else for Mrs. Lackey? Nope. Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Lackey. Okay. Now we are going to jump into the first of our public hearings. The King George County Board of Supervisors will now hold a public hearing that has been properly advertised to receive public input regarding the proposed Virginia Department of Transportation Secondary Six-Year Plan FY '23 through '28. I will first ask for a staff report, then I will open the floor for public comment. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker in order to afford everyone an opportunity to speak. Please state your name and address before you comment. Upon completion of public comment, I will bring the matter back to the board for consideration. The board may or may not take action tonight depending on information received during public comment. Mr. Beal.
Hey, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I feel like at Disney, you get the fast pass and you get to the front of the line. Appreciate the amendment to the agenda. I'll run through this quickly, recognizing most people are here for the next public hearing. This is your secondary six-year plan, uh, public hearing. It's a six-year plan, uh, secondary routes. Six-year plan, secondary routes. So these are all the routes numbered 600 and above. This slide here shows all the, uh, the funding, uh, the line items for the funding. So you have tele fees and unpaid road funds. Uh, and fiscal year '23, it's a little over $200,000. In '24, it drops to about 170 and it, it maintains that, uh, funding throughout the, throughout the plan. Once we approve the plan, I'll sign it as well as the county administrator. If you can move to the next slide. These are the line items in the plan currently. Uh, Rixie Road is in the plan, $160,000. All that funding is available now. We'll be working on that later this year. These are all part of the rural rustic programs where we take existing state maintained gravel roads and hard surface them. Chestnut Hill Loop is in the plan now. Uh, that construction is almost complete. Uh, we hope to finish that tomorrow, everything except for the hard surfacing. Uh, you see the ditches have been cleaned and a bunch of stone has been added on that road. Next slide. Uh, the prim part one, uh, the board prioritized last year. You can see that funding becomes available in fiscal year '23, which starts July 1 of this year. I still have on your report, um, that, that, um, we'll finish that in the summer of '23, but I'm pushing my staff to finish that this year. It is a, uh, 1.6 miles. So it is a pretty heavy lift for us, but we're going to push through and try to get that done. In our presentation in the meeting last month, uh, the board asked me to add prim part two, uh, which is another 1.3 miles of prim road and that will complete, um, prim road. Um, each section there has a price tag of a little over half a million dollars. So prim part two, you can see how the funding works out there. Would become available in fiscal year '27. And certainly as we, uh, finish these projects, we use a fairly conservative estimate, um, for the dollars. As we finish them, we just put the previous year's funding on the next project. So being $23,000 short of FY '27, I would expect that come July 25, we're in a position to finish, um, prim, uh, part two. So the next slide, countywide is where we park all the money until you prioritize another project. We did take the three countywides from last year, um, and put them all into one, uh, just to try to make the bookkeeping a little easier. That money is, is previous funding, uh, so that if something comes up, it'll be available, um, to be spent now. But, um, throughout the six years of the plan, uh, you have $185,000 in the countywide and $144,000 in the unpaid road fund, um, line item. And that's money that, um, you know, can be used for future projects when you decide what's next. Next slide. So rural rustic program, traditionally the county has used these funds for the rural rustic program. As I said before, it has to be a gravel road that's already in the state system. So these aren't, uh, you know, private gravel roads that we're accepting into the system. We're just paving existing state maintained roads. They can't carry more than 1,500 vehicles per day. You do have to prioritize the road as a line item in the secondary six-year plan. It needs to be predominantly for local traffic. So, you know, if you know of a, of a large track that you want to rezone on a gravel road, uh, then we wouldn't want that road to be part of this program. If it was going to have a significant amount of traffic on it, uh, we try to maintain the rural, rural character of these roads. Drainage improvements, just make minor drainage improvements. We replace some culverts, um, but no real major drain, uh, drainage improvements. And then there's a link there for all the particulars on the, on the rural rustic program. Next slide. These are all the existing, uh, gravel roads in the county, uh, that are currently state maintained. The ones in yellow have over 50 cars per day, 50 vehicles per day, uh, based on a count in 2020. The ones with the Y in the SYIP column are already on the secondary six-year plan. They were approved last year. So until, uh, until we've exhausted the list in yellow, we've hard surfaced all of them, I would ask that the board continue to prioritize those routes as they're the heaviest, heaviest volumes. So you can see a little over, almost 19 miles of unpaid roads in the county and, um, over 10 miles of those have over 50 vehicles per day. Next slide. That's the end of my presentation. Do you have any questions at this point?
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Beal?
Just another unrelated question. A lot of traffic counters that have been out in the last couple of weeks, uh, on the different roads, is that just the traffic folks getting studies or?
Yeah. If you look on the, on the VDOT website, you can find traffic count for every road in the state. It's part of a routine cycle. They count them every so many years. So that's just regular scheduled counting.
Okay. We had some questions on that, but thank you. All right. We will open the floor for public comment. Public comment limited to three minutes per speaker. Like I said, affording everyone opportunity to speak. Please say, state your name and address before you comment. Anybody like to come up and give public comment on this hearing? Seeing none? Mr. Dines? Any, uh, one online? Okay. Anybody received any written statements? Nope. Okay. We will close public comment. Okay. Do you need a motion?
Mr. Beal, you need to adopt the proposed secondary six-years plan as presented?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I make a motion to adopt the secondary six-year plan as presented.
Second.
We have a motion properly seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion passes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
May I ask for consensus of the board to direct staff to bring the necessary resolution from the Board of Supervisors to our next meeting in support of the VDOT secondary six-year plan fiscal year 2023 through 2028?
Yes.
Sure.
Cause I believe Mr. Beal is going to need that to move forward with.
We're working on a draft. I'll get it, I'll get it to you.
Thank you.
Could I just hit a couple of things on my report real quick?
Sure.
A bunch of routine maintenance, I'll, I'll skip all that. The tree debris removal continues. We're averaging about two or three crews. We've almost got the primary routes done. Littering grass, uh, end of the month, uh, first of June, we'll be picking up all the litter countywide and mowing all the grass in the county. All the pavement schedule stuff, June is going to be a very busy month. I think every pavement schedule will be, uh, under construction in June. I talked about Chestnut. As soon as we finish Chestnut, we're going to move to Rixie. We're going to try to hit prim of this summer too. Two items on the smart scale list, the two projects on 301. I would like to, uh, maybe get with Mr. Miller and have some of our design team, uh, come to a future board meeting, maybe about August, just to refresh those projects. It's been a while since they were approved. Give you an opportunity to ask questions before we really start in on the design work on those two projects. The scour repair project, uh, bids are due next week on the 301 scour repair. And that's really it. Are you, you all have any other questions? Mr. Collins, I got your, uh, request on Fairview. I'll look into that and get back with you.
All these paving projects for this summer are going to be daytime? They're, they have set hours or?
Work on 301 is at night.
Night. Okay. Not on holidays?
Not on holidays.
Or just before a holiday weekend?
Definitely not Sunday afternoon.
Yes. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may ask, Mr. Beal, since you are a, a state official, um, I had something I was going to provide. Mr. Clark sits in on those phone calls with the, with the Maryland folks on the bridge. You were on that call. Could you provide them with an update? You're a technical guy. You can probably talk to it better than I can.
Okay. Well, I think the take home message is everything is on schedule and everything seems to be going well. I would, uh, they did emphasize that the, uh, no wake zone is important. They still have some cranes out there, still doing some heavy lifts. So we'd encourage, uh, citizens that are on the river to make sure they're not making any wake. They had, uh, they had most all the girders set. They had one little, um, span closer to the Virginia side that they were still setting girders and, uh, they were following that with the deck pores. And so all the concrete is, um, is, uh, being placed. But I think, you know, for the most part, there was nothing, I will say, uh, the Roseland Road, um, the Roseland Road transition, that intersection will move to the south a little bit. And, uh, that's coming up. They were planning a big, uh, uh, public outreach, uh, with some door hangers and things for the people that live on Roseland Road. So they'll know, uh, when the, when their left turn, you know, moves up a few hundred feet. But other than that, it was a pretty routine, uh, update. Everything's on schedule. I think substantial completions end of the year. So I don't, I don't know. Do you have any other specific questions I can follow up on?
I thought Mr. Clark indicated that in November, October, November of '23, they're planning to do the demo for the old bridge. Is that what you got out of that meeting too? Or is that?
I'd have to follow up on those. There's the, the demo starts, there was going to be a lag while they did some environmental permitting. And they did talk about, uh, some of the, um, some of the pilings had to be removed from the old bridge, uh, using explosives. That was the safest way to do that. So there was going to be some environmental permitting for that as well. But I'm not fully versed on the demolition schedule.
I just thought you, you talk their lingo better than I do, so that's fine. Thank you.
I'm good at potholes and grass bridges or.
Or Mr. Beal, if you, one other thing, you just, you brought it up about the no wake zone. If you can pass on to your counterparts that's working on the river part of it. I've had, we've had, I've had a number of people reach out and say that the no wake markers that were a mile above and a mile below are, many of them are missing. And some folks have run into trouble. I know there's actually one sitting up on the buoy 30 sandbar that's just anchored way up somewhere where it hasn't been. And I know I've had a lot, a number of people ask me that the markers are just, they're not there or not visible. So, you know, with Memorial Day weekend and summer coming, if you could just pass on to those guys, if they could remark that or, um, reposition them like they should be, it would help everybody out.
Sure. I'll let them know tonight.
All right. Thank you. All right. Thanks.
All right. Thank you all.
Mr. Chair, would you entertain me for a moment?
Certainly.
Okay. I know we have the next public hearing coming up, um, in regards to the tax rate. So in an abundance of caution, based on advice from the county attorney, and in order to avoid even the appearance of a conflict of interest, I'm making the following disclosure. As a member of the Board of Supervisors, I am expected to participate in the discussion of and to vote upon the adoption of the county's budget, which includes the allocation of funds for the King George County Public Schools. My wife is currently employed by the King George County Schools. She works as a paraprofessional at the preschool and has for a number of years. My wife's salary may be affected by the portions of the county budget allocation for the King George County Public Schools, although by her employment status, she is a member of a group with a personal interest that is larger than three members. I'm able to participate in discussion and adoption of the budget, including the allocation of funds for the King George County School, Public Schools, and to vote fairly objectively and in the public interest. Therefore, I will participate in the discussion of the vote upon and the adoption of the county's budget, including the allocation of funds for the King George County Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Granger. All right. We will move on to our next public hearing. The King George County Board of Supervisors will now hold a public hearing that has been properly advertised to receive public input regarding the calendar year 2022 proposed tax rates. I will first ask for the staff report. I will then open the floor to public comment. Public comment will be limited to three minutes per speaker in order to afford everyone an opportunity to speak. Please state your name and address before you comment. Upon completion of public comment, I will bring the, the matter back to the board for consideration. The board may or may not take action tonight depending on all information received during public comment. And when I do open a public comment, I do have a sign up sheet and I will start at the, at the first person on the sign up sheet and work my way down. Uh, and at the end of that, if there's anybody that wants to jump in, jump in afterwards, feel free.
Ms. Hahn will be providing the report.
Ms. Hahn, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. A little bit of background on the budget process was, um, in building the county budget for fiscal year 2022, 2023, calculations have determined that a total general fund expenditures require a minimum total of $60,297,269 in general fund revenue. require a minimum total of $60,297,269 in general fund revenue. Prior to the property reassessment that was completed in 2021, the total value of real property in the county was $2,895,743,727. The tax rate of 73 cents per 100 of assessed value provided a real property tax in the amount of $21,138,929. In order to meet the minimum total needs, if there had not been a reassessment, we would have had to increase real property taxes by a minimum of five cents at that 2021 value. So that was a minimum increase of 9%, and this is based on the pre-assessed values. Effects of the reassessment, the values of existing homes increased by $1,414,239 or 35.95%. The lowered tax rate to offset the increased assessment and generate the same total of tax revenue as 2021 is 54 cents per 100 of assessed value. That would generate $21,259,724. At the time of this public hearing, there is still uncertainty as to the revenue that the county will receive from the Commonwealth of Virginia. General fund revenue calculations included revenue that would be generated from a personal property tax rate of $3.25. That's what we've used in the calculations, and that has not been totally voted on by the board, but I just wanted that to be included in this. The minimum real property revenue, if we leave it at the 3.25, the minimum real property revenue that we need would be $23 million to cover the general fund budget, and that includes the county administrator cuts that were, we were approved, directed to go ahead and cut, the three major capital projects, which, for anyone who's not familiar with those, that is for the remainder of what we need to complete the contracts for building the new courthouse, the radio system that Sheriff Giles mentioned earlier tonight, and a new fire station. And at the last budget work session, we were directed to use a contribution of $19.4 million to the schools in those calculations. So that was what was used, so the 23 million is the minimum for all of those items. Just to put in here that if we went with the advertised rate of 68 cents per 100, that would generate $5,511,780 in real prox seven revenue, an additional over last year's, and this is a 25.92% increase. The next slide provides a scenario of revenue that would be generated at different tax rates, I was asked to provide that. So, over to the left is the reassessed value of the homes, the different possible tax rates, the 68, the total revenue is $26,771,504, at 65, it would be $25,594,08, and if you come down to 60 cents, that's $23,621,915. So at 60 cents, there's a cushion there of $621,915, and that's just for the minimum. So I wanted you all to see what the different rates and would cause to the general fund revenue for real property. Are there any questions from members of the board?
Mr. Granger?
Yes, sir, thank you. Ms. Hawn, thank you for the brief, I appreciate it. Just to verify, one cent of tax rate to real estate property taxes would generate 390?
$3,866.
393,868.
866.
866.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. That's all I had, thank you.
Anyone else? No?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Hawn. Okay, I will now open the floor up for public comment, and like I stated before, public comment will be limited to three minutes, and please state your name and address before, or as you come up to speak. So first on our list, I have is Andrea LaRoche. It's like we have crickets in the room.
Hi, my name is Andrea LaRoche, and I live at 600 Sampson Road. I am a special education teacher for King George County Schools. I am dedicated to my students, I work through challenges and keep going. As a special education teacher, I serve as both an educator and an advocate for my students. Right now, I am fulfilling my job responsibilities. I will always advocate for my students and their needs. On behalf of the students, I am asking the board to fully fund our schools. Schools will never be what they were prior to March of 2020. Teachers are in year two of teaching in post-COVID conditions. School has changed, and we have to make changes with it. This year, we have learned that many students struggle just to be students. We have seen an increase in challenging behaviors and a decrease in grade level maturity. The learning gaps that have been created since March of 2020 have been a challenge to overcome as we continue to run schools the same way without adapting to meet changing needs. Higher failure rates, lower test scores, and a decrease in the participation in advanced academics are factors that affect graduation rates, dropout rates, and college-bound students. Meaningful solutions to these realities are hard to come by in our current status. The retention and recruiting of quality teachers is an ever-growing concern, the demands on the teacher have drastically increased. Teachers are not given adequate time to fulfill their roles and responsibilities, teachers are expected to work while outside the school day to catch up. The day-to-day demands on teachers to collaborate with staff, prepare lessons, design special instruction, engage students, communicate with parents, and serve students has reached a breaking point. Teachers are struggling to get things accomplished at all levels, yet we continue to expect results. We need to address the following deficits: lack of time, inadequate compensation, and insufficient staffing. We need to recognize that teachers are giving of their time and create additional stipends to capture their efforts. We need to be competitive with other districts as best we can, other districts are announcing pay increases to current and new staff for next year. We also need to increase staffing in order to appropriately meet the needs of our students. Teachers, staff, and admin have been breaking our backs to help kids, spending our own money to help them achieve, and devoting our time and effort to make it happen because we want our students to excel and achieve at what we believe are great schools. There is no other profession that has these expectations without the aid of time, support, and compensation. As the times continue to change, people are not, uh-oh, people are not flocking to be teachers. Current teachers are looking at other options, including other districts, hourly wage jobs, or other horizons with appropriate expectations. How much longer can we operate in survival mode with pre-COVID mindset?
Thank you, Mrs. LaRoche. Next on the list, Yvonne Richard.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Yvonne Richard of Cedar Lane in King George, and I am here to request that you fully fund the school board budget as presented by Dr. Benson and the school board, not just the $19.4 million as mentioned earlier. As a board, it is your responsibility to fund our schools so that we can adequately educate the students of King George County. By fully funding our schools, we can have adequate staffing with qualified teachers for all of our students. By fully funding our schools, we can reduce the number, reduce the number of quality instructional staff that are leaving for other districts that can offer them 17% of a pay raise or more by coming just across the county line. By fully funding our schools, we can have appropriate class sizes for all grade levels, and that will allow for optimal learning to take place. By fully funding our schools, we can purchase supplies and materials that are much needed in every classroom to provide instruction. And to be clear, Mr. Collins, I am not asking that teachers be paid $100,000 per year. As much as I would enjoy that, and every teacher in the nation would enjoy that, we know that that is not going to happen, and we realize that isn't going to happen anytime soon. I am asking for you to fully fund the school board budget that was presented to you so that we are not the sixth lowest per pupil investment in the state. If you are not willing to fully fund the school budget, then I ask you to remove yourself from your elected position because you are not representing our county's most valuable asset, our students.
Thank you, Mrs. Richard. Next up, Carrie Gonzalez.
Good evening, my name is Carrie Gonzalez, and I live at 8116 Oak Crest Drive. Support for an end investment in public education have produced generations of Americans who have made this country what it is today. Did you know that chocolate chip cookies are an American invention? Hearing aids, cardiac defibrillators, traffic lights, crash test dummies, microwave ovens, chemotherapy, email? Without public education, we would not have smartphones, GPS aided navigation, internet, or Amazon Prime. If you have an Amazon Prime account, did you know that you're funding Jeff Bezos's Clock of the Long Now? He is building this clock in his personally-owned mountain to inspire visitors to be mindful of their place in history. This clock is intended to tick once a year for 10,000 years. Providing local funding for our children's public education is an investment in our own Clock of the Long Now, and I would argue a much more meaningful investment. When we make decisions about how we spend our hard-earned money, do we really think about the long-term implications of our investments? The freedoms we take for granted every day require educated citizens and children, each of whom has unique aptitudes and needs. When we fund the needs of our schools based on the needs of each student, and that is exactly what King George County Schools budget represents. It includes funding for the reading specialist for the student whose parent is unable to come to this hearing tonight and speak up because they're working two jobs, and they do not have time to read each night to their child. It includes funding for the physical education teacher at the high school for the student who doesn't get healthy meals at home, and who needs that one-on-one attention from their phys ed teacher to learn the importance of being active and taking care of their body. It includes funding for the autism teacher for that student who needs one-on-one assistance from a teacher who knows how to address their unique needs. It includes funding for our transportation office to make sure our buses are properly maintained, and to make sure we have enough drivers to get our children to school safely and on time each and every day. It includes pay for paraprofessionals to include one-on-one interactions in the classrooms, and includes funding for maintaining competitive compensation for our teachers because without them, we have nothing. Our children need to be prepared for the rapidly changing world they are inheriting. Investment in public education in King George County Schools will ensure that future generations are able to keep our community and our country safe. I am optimistic that despite our differences, we all agree that the United States of America is an awesome country to live in, and in order to keep that, keep it that way, we need public education to keep up, to help keep us number one in the world. There are no guarantees that we get to keep that title, but our first patriotic duty is investing in public education. The community a child is born in should not determine the quality of their education. It is on us to elect leaders who will make sure every child in every school receives the quality education they deserve, and that is why we have elected each of you. Mr. Collins, thank you for your eight years on the school board, please continue your advocacy for our schools and for funding them adequately. Mr. Stonehill, I enjoyed the opportunity to get to know you while we were campaigning, and I lament that you were not able to get back in touch with me this past week, but I know you were very busy, so thank you for your time. Ms. Cupka, thank you for the many conversations we've had over the last two and a half years, I know you have the best interest of our schools in your heart. Mr. Granger, thank you for the time you commit to coaching youth soccer, having spirited debates with me about the local composite index, and for your time on this board. Ms. Bender, thank you for taking time out of your day this morning to discuss the school budget, and for your years of service. In closing, I ask that you do what is right in your heart and fully fund our schools, as well as all of the other county departments, including the service authority.
Thank you, Mrs. Gonzalez. Next up, Brian Gregan. Let me know if I got that one right. Okay, thank you.
Brian Gregan, 9485 Elm Court, Shiloh District. I'm just here tonight to, I sent a couple of emails regarding, regarding what I think would be a reasonable compromise as far as the budget numbers concerned, and I arrived at the number that I'm willing to request here from the composite index of local ability to pay, which is created by the Virginia Department of Education, and this reads from their website, "The composite index determines a school division's ability to pay education costs fundamental to the Commonwealth's standards of quality. The composite index is calculated using three indicators of a locality's ability to pay," and I won't bore you with those, that information, but that's all available on the VDOE website. And the, so basically, this is just saying, this is the minimum amount we should strive for, like a goal, that's the way I see it. And, and, and that number, based on the request from the, from the, from our school, our school division, is 21.7 million, that's the number. So I think, you know, a number between 21 and a half, 22 million is very reasonable, and, and would, would get us close to, to possibly meeting the request of the school division based on the numbers from the state, from the, from the House, the Senate, and the governor's office. I think that would get us, get us really close. And, and a couple of people have mentioned it, that there is, you know, potential issue for the county as far as competing salary-wise with other counties, you know, whether we like it or not, Charles County is a neighboring county, they're much larger than us, but they pay considerable amount, considerable amount more to teachers than King George does, and we do need to keep that in mind as far as going forward for the future of the county. That's all, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up, Ms. Lovell. Okay. Ken Mead.
I'm Ken Mead, Shiloh District Supervisor there, 9284 Carriage Lane. Looking at this property tax increase, looks like it's going to be around 34% increase for me. That's if the 68 cents goes through, I'm hoping for more around 57, 58 cents around. I can live with that, with the inflation, understanding all that, but man, 34% on that, 18% increase on personal property tax, that's tough for us retired guys, especially in retired families. Been listening in on some of the meetings recently about the budgets and stuff, and I started getting involved after the tax assessment came out, that this is not going to stand. I'm seeing some things that I think can be fixed. For example, you're talking on the county budget, a living wage and federal minimum wage, what are we getting in return for these guys? I mean, they come in and they want the big bucks, but what have they got to offer? You know, I can learn quick, you know, I have my GED, I can come in, but I want a lot of money from you all, I want a benefits package and all. Is that what I'm paying for, I'm going to chisel away at my retirement now so someone else can have an easy job? It doesn't seem to be fair. One of the other things I heard about the services board, the manager there was talking about he doesn't have enough people to repair the vehicles sometimes, they get swamped sometimes, and I imagine they do catch up. I just earlier today, y'all approved to hire on two more mechanics, and here's two people coming on with a salary and all the benefits package for when they get behind on the vehicles. What do they do when they don't have these vehicles that need to be repaired? Well, we're still paying these guys full-time. Has anybody considered what we would call a surge maintenance contract? That's where you'd work with local garages that would support the county when you have excess vehicles on occasion to repair. Be a lot cheaper than hiring two people with a full benefits package on there, things like that, and that's only two areas that I heard of. I imagine I could probably go through and pick out a whole lot more stuff. A Justin Putin manager could pick that up and run with it and save a lot of money and manage this program well. At least that's what I did in my working years. I appreciate what the Board of Supervisors is doing here, I know, I know you're not getting paid New York City-type salaries for this work, but I do appreciate the time you're putting in, so not going to beat you up too bad on this, but yeah, we need to get a handle on this. The other question is, how do citizens get involved? I didn't find out about how to do this until this tax assessment came out, that's when I got involved, I started looking, but everybody I've talked to, they don't know how, where they approach it, how can they talk to you people? They, they don't know. I think there's a PR issue with the Board of Supervisors here. And finally, demographics, we keep these rates going up, old folks like me are going to have to move away, your democraft, demographics of the county is going to change, you're going to have a whole lot more work to do dealing with the younger folks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mead. Next up, Carl Crump. No, Carl? Okay, moving on, David Bush.
Good evening, thank you for this opportunity, my name is David Bush, I live at 15570 Dickinson's Corner Drive in the Shiloh District. First, I want to say that I am here also hoping that you consider fully funding the budget for the school division, but maybe even more than that, I'd just like you to consider a couple of things. I really think that, I know that all of you represent a lot of different stakeholders, we understand. We on the school board represent different stakeholders, but when you think about it, we all represent the county and everybody in it, including the students. And I think for the county's sake, as much as possible, the Board of Supervisors and the school board need to show a united front with whatever we do. So I just want to say that I would respect whatever decision you make, but I'm fearful that if we don't fully fund the schools, that it's going to reap repercussions that may have a damaging effect on the entire county, including the kinds of, some of the things that you're doing. I'm worried that we actually may lose some teachers, some very high-quality teachers. And so that's probably one of the biggest things on my priority list. I've been a school teacher and an administrator, I'm retired now, for almost 30 years before coming here to King George. And I know, time after time, that if we did not, if we did not reach our budget goals, that one of the first things that ends up having to change is that we can't give raises that we wanted to give. The school teachers end up leaving, and I'm just concerned about that. But more than that, I'd like to see us really work together. You know, as we are unified as a school board and Board of Supervisors and other entities, including Sheriff's Department, there's so many others. The more that we're unified, the more that this entire county will be unified. And so I just want you to know that whatever decision you make, I will respect. And I'd just like you to respect also the school board and what we presented you. There was a lot of hard work that went into that by the staff members, by the superintendent, by the school board. And we hope that we can come to an agreement. I appreciate what Mr. Gregan had presented, and I think the VDOE, it looks like that according to figures that I've seen, that between 21 and 22 million is not unreasonable. I know that your last report or your last consideration was at 19.4. I would just like you to consider at least improving that a little, hopefully, to fund the entire amount. God bless you and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bush. Dee Strauss.
Good evening, Chairman and members of the Board of Supervisors and all those present here today. My name is Dee Strauss. I live at 10362 Ridgeway Drive in King George. I'm a marketing teacher at King George High School and a DECA advisor at King George High School. This is my 25th year living back in King George. I grew up here and attended our county schools graduating just a few years ago. I am a landowner with real estate property in this county, and according to the assessment, it's pretty valuable. This is my 22nd year as a teacher, all in King George. Teaching is a true calling, and I will continue on. Our Superintendent, Dr. Benson, along with his staff and our school board, have developed and presented to you a needs-based budget for the coming school year. All county departments have done the same. Our county has grown to over 26,000 people. We are finally getting a Chick-fil-A. More rooftops are popping up and more children are filling the halls of our schools. This means more need for highly qualified teachers and staff to avoid overcrowded classrooms and overloaded personnel. The school budget presented is a needs-based budget, prepared by the most qualified people, our superintendent, his staff and our school board. You may not have the final numbers from the state, but this board can and should be sure to completely support the requests from the superintendent and fully fund the school budget for the 2223 school year, showing support for students by an increase in the per pupil investment and showing support of staff by ensuring step and pay increases so we can keep our dedicated staff and be able to attract highly qualified staff with competitive pay and provide for the additional positions needed to instruct and support our county's children. I fully support the advertised tax figure of 68 cents per hundred of assessment, still the lowest around in our region, and ask you to make that vote tonight, finalizing this county's budget so that all of our county departments can move forward, especially the schools, so contracts can be offered and signed and needed positions filled. Thank you for your time this evening, and thank you for all you do for our county.
Thank you, Mrs. Strauss. Terry Rinco.
Good evening, Chairman Stonehill and fellow supervisors. Thank you for your time, your dedication and hard work providing the necessary resources to operate all county services. My name is Terry Rinco, and I come before you today as the President of the County Council of PTAs for King George County Public Schools and a member of the Career and Technical Education Advisory Committee. I am the product of a private Christian education. When my husband's job brought us to King George, I was skeptical of what quality of education a small rural public school system could provide. Certainly, it would have less resources than the bigger system we had outside of Washington DC. I researched a private school in Stafford, slept in my car the night before kindergarten registration to try to get my daughter a spot, and was still not early enough in line to score her one of the three available positions. Reluctantly, I enrolled our eldest in public school. In March of kindergarten, we received the call that Anna had come off of that waiting list and had her spot in first grade. I leapt at the chance until my wise husband called my attention to the fact that pulling Anna out of King George County Schools would simply be trying to solve problems we saw didn't really exist. This year marks 20 years our family has had a child in King George County Public Schools. Here's what parents of students in this small special school division see do exist. Number one, more time spent from teachers per child. As a King George High Schooler, my eldest daughter received services every day while her Stafford friends receive services only twice a week. A smaller system has less identified children and more time to service. Number two, teacher retention. All three of my children were taught by some of the same teachers despite a span of 12 years. Shout out to Valerie Burke retiring this year. Number three, not one but two rigorous governor-school program opportunities in King George County Schools for highly able students. Number four, a partnership between Rappahannock Community College and King George High School where students are able to take dual enrollment courses during the day and/or college classes at night. Students every year graduate King George High with RCC Associate degrees. Number five, caring nurses that go above and beyond. My son Franklin has type 1 diabetes. Nurse Lisa Tate helped him and the 11 other student diabetics manage their disease daily. She attended my son's graduation party, just asked me yesterday how he was, and now carries the division's accomplished Certified Nursing Assistant Program torch where students can earn state licensure and go on to the RN Partner Program between Jermana and UMW. Involved parents. There's extraordinary parent involvement in King George County Schools with parents holding every position on every PTA board in every school for the next school year. Please don't let yourself or your constituents buy into things that aren't really problems here. I'm grateful we caught ourselves and encourage you all to fully fund the 2223 King George County Schools budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rinco. Next up, Renee Parker.
My name is Renee Parker at 7144 Pepper Mill Road. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I'm not going to relay funding statistics to you again. You've certainly seen the information more than once. I'm here to ask you to consider consequences. From the outside looking in, it appears that boards historically consider the funding request from the school division, realize there's no new revenue stream to tap into, realize it would take a raise in taxes to answer the needs, fear the blowback from residents, decide not to fully fund the funding request, and then call it a day. It's become much too easy to walk away without giving a second thought to the consequences of that decision, a decision that affects the most vulnerable population of our county. It's become too easy because no one sees the consequences. On a daily basis, you all do not see the numbers of long-term substitute teachers in the school buildings that are not qualified educators. You do not see the numbers of children with special needs that would greatly benefit from an adequate number of highly qualified sped teachers, pairs and therapists. You do not see the stress our educators are under knowing that every one of their planning periods will be filled with subbing a class that has no teacher. You do not see the children arrive home later than usual because of an understaffed transportation division. You do not see the lack of one-on-one availability due to inappropriate class sizes. You do not see the apathy in the students who don't ask the questions they have because they know their teacher is overwhelmed. It has become too easy for boards in the past to say, "We give you what we give you, and it's up to you to do with it what you will." Be the board that says yes. Yes to proper salaries for educators, bus drivers, pairs and staff. Yes to adequate numbers of certified sped educators and therapists. Yes to adequate numbers of counselors. Yes to the very real progress that comes with these decisions. Please take this opportunity to be a board that doesn't look like the boards of the past. Be the board that makes it abundantly clear that this county government truly cares about the humans that occupy our school buildings, the humans that are the future of our county. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Parker. Next up, Dr. Benson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Robert Benson. I'm Superintendent of King George County Schools. I do share the concern you've heard regarding compensation. Regrettably, the compensation proposed this year, while it's consistent with what the states propose, while it's consistent with what local government is proposing, it's not truly a raise. I think we all know that this is really to keep our employees' pace of spending or saving commensurate with inflation. I'll tell you that Monday, I regret that I'll be bringing three names to our school board for resignations of teachers who are leaving for positions in Stafford County that are higher compensation. So I do share this concern. I want to take my time to explain what I explained previously, and that is that Virginia utilizes a partnership between the state and each locality to fund schools. In a sense, it is a pre-brokered deal that utilizes a statistic you've heard about tonight called a local composite index. The LCI is used to gauge the local fiscal effort that can be reasonably targeted for each county and city. Its primary purpose is to divide state dollars equitably across all the localities in Virginia. But the inverse function of the statistic yields the suggested percentage each locality should fulfill to make the school's annual operating budget whole. This coming year and for the year following, our local composite index is .3805. In theory, this means that the state expects King George County to pick up 38 cents of each dollar needed for the annual operating budget. Our local budget proposed for next year estimates $55,773,965 in costs. At a rate of 38 cents on the dollar, King George's share is 21.2 million. You've temporarily benchmarked fiscal effort for the schools at 19.4 million. To maintain our school division's quality, to meet the needs of our students and families, and to ensure we can attract and maintain the instructional and ancillary services our residents and children deserve, I respectfully request you consider a figure of 21.2 million or 38% as suggested by the local composite index calculated for King George County Schools. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Benson. Next up, Donna Zwicker.
Good evening, Chairman and members of the board. Thank you for having us here to speak with you and for listening to us. I had something else prepared, but when Mr. Bush mentioned unity and being unified, I thought to myself, well, what can unify us? And probably everybody in here has a child or a grandchild. And that's what we're here for. Teachers are not here to get big salaries. We're here for those children and to educate them, love them, and just put them out in the world with a good place to go. So I ask that you fully fund the school budget. Even, I mean, I'm a homeowner in the county, I forgot to mention, over on Luther Lane. And even if my taxes go up, those kids are worth it. That's what we see every day. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Marguerite Bardone. If you're outside there, step right up.
Is this on this time? Ah, good. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, county officials and fellow residents, I'm Marguerite Bardone of 8214 Lighthouse Lane. I'm here to talk about property taxes with respect and appreciation for all the people who work in schools and educate our children. And I'm not here to bury Caesar. I'm actually here to praise Caesar. I think you've done an outstanding job shoring up our critical infrastructure needs, not with our taxes, but with millions in state funds and millions from the more than $5.2 million federal dollars you got from ARPA. Commissioner Hart just told you about the money trickling in from your increase in the cigarette tax rate. I've read that it is projected you could raise as much as $4 million annually from that increase. We've also heard that we're still awaiting undetermined new taxes from the hundreds of new construction and occupancy permits issued just last year. The bottom line is, you've been doing a great job keeping our county on good financial footing in dire economic times. And I'm here to urge you to give the same consideration to residents. I hope, I believe, that with wisdom and with compassion, you're going to approve the lower property tax rate of 54 cents. I certainly hope you do so. In fact, if you could go lower, if you found a means to an end for that, that would be well-appreciated. Because the decision that you're going to make on property tax whenever it comes, keep in mind, there are people right now making decisions on what critical needs they have to give up, reduce or delay just to maintain a modicum of survival in the face of all of these skyrocketing costs. So please, think well of us. Please wisely and compassionately get us a lower property tax rate. Thank you for your time and consideration and all your good work.
Thank you. Next up, Jim Morissette. Okay, you're going to pass? Right, last on my list, Amber Wald.
Hi, hello. It's Amber Waldy, and I live at 10478 Madison Drive. And I am a teacher at King George High School, and I'm a homeowner in King George, and I have two kids in the public schools. I feel like I have a unique perspective because I kind of have all three going on. And I'm here to beg and employ you to please fund our schools. Recruitment and retention is and will continue to be a problem in our county. All of our schools are extremely understaffed. I know that other people have stated that, so I'm not going to bore you with lots of stuff, but as it stands right now, many of us are giving up our planning period and teaching the entire day, and we only have our lunch. And at the beginning of the year, we even had our students eating in our classroom. So really, we didn't even have a break. We also are being called on to sub during our planning periods if we're not already teaching during our planning periods, which means we don't have a planning period, which forces us to then work after school and do our planning at that point. I can tell you, for myself, there's not a day that I don't leave before 4:00 and we're done being paid at 2:30. So we are all very overwhelmed. Like another gentleman said earlier, I am also afraid that we are going to continue to lose teachers if we do not fully fund. Just this afternoon, I got a text from my sister. She's in another state, so it doesn't really compare to us, but her son is in third grade, and they closed his school for the entire next week because they are short-staffed. I don't want to see that happen here. We need to keep our fully qualified teachers. Some facts that you may not know. King George, you may or you may not. King George County is the only county in the area that gave no COVID bonuses to its teachers, has only proposed a 5% raise that was promised by the state. We rank the lowest in per pupil spending, has not finalized its budget, has not given contracts to teachers. Other counties are providing assigning bonuses and retention bonuses. We have neither. They're also providing large pay raises, 17% to 19%. I've lived and/or taught in this county for 15 years, and I love King George County, and I want to continue to be here. I'm imploring you to please fund our budget. Even if our budget goes up to the 68 cents, we still will have the lowest property taxes. Even if our budget goes up to the 68 cents, we still will have the lowest property taxes in the area. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Waldy. Okay, that is the last that's on the sign-up sheet. Is there anyone else here in the audience that would like to give public comment? Come right up.
My name is Kunt Campbell. I live on Vernon Woods Drive in King George, Virginia. And I'm thinking, I'm a freshman, I'm starting in high school, and all these years, my parents have been telling me, I have to work, I have to study, that education is important, and I have done my best. But then I find out that the adults in my county, have they done their best? They don't want us to have fully qualified teachers. It's okay to let substitutes teach. That's great for physics and algebra and it's a joke. They don't want to support the teachers that are supporting me and trying to teach me and guide me. The favorite teacher my brother had when he was a sophomore is gone now because our salaries are so low, and she has a family to support and has to live. We all know that teaching was usually a woman's job, so one reason it's so lowly paid. Please, please, yes, the children, we push them to get an education, let's support the children. Let's be there and give them the budget they need. We all know how important teachers are. This pandemic has proven that. When they weren't with their teachers, things really started sliding. The teachers that have studied, have been to college, who have the education, they are critically important. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kuntz. Anyone else?
My name is Diana Garland. I'm the school social worker at King George High School. I live at 26 Jefferson Street in Fredericksburg, Virginia. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak. I've been a social worker for 28 years. I'm entering my eighth year with King George County Schools next fall and my 18th year as a school social worker. Thank you for allowing me this time to speak, and I would like to encourage you to fully fund the proposed school budget. This year presented new challenges that in turn led to one of the most frustrating years of my career, in spite of my experience and time as a school social worker. I will admit, I'm concerned over whether my paycheck will be affected as a result of your decision, but I'm more concerned about the state of our students' futures if we continue in this deficit of qualified staff. Research from many sources validates that schools that are not well-funded end up not well-staffed and ultimately produce lower test scores, less safe environments, and less opportunity for our students to have a rich educational experience. We currently have fewer staff covering a higher demand as well as a higher need population. The range of students I interacted with this year was vastly different than the years before. I had more students who were in AP classes, in governor's schools, who were stressed out and couldn't handle the responsibilities of school any longer. This was not due to COVID-19 shutdowns. This started before COVID-19 shutdowns. It started with the budget not being fully funded in years past and/or not being able to retain highly qualified staff or teachers. Teachers who are covering extra blocks are forfeiting their planning time. I've never had a planning time. I've never had a lunch break. Half the time, I leave kids in my office for five minutes so I can go to the restroom. My job as a school social worker has increased in demand over the past seven years to a point where I can hardly go to work every morning and function every night when I come home. I don't have time to have a free person come to the school and help me through internship because I don't have time to guide them and teach them. I'm giving away free labor because I don't have that extra time to invest in another social worker that could help me if they were adequately trained. Teachers are trying to train other people who are not highly qualified and do not have teaching degrees, but they are burnt out and don't have the time to do it. That vicious cycle started prior to COVID and has continued. If we don't fully fund our students and the services that we need in this county, we will pay for it in the end. Through court service unit, through placements, and through other avenues. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here in public?
Hi, my name is Ed Toot. I live at 6325 Vista Court in King George here. First of all, I want to thank all my fellow residents here. I want to especially thank the teachers and school employees. I don't have kids, okay? You guys are great. Keep it up. I come to some of these meetings, I watch what you all do, I hear about the service board being taken over by the county. Eh, I don't know what happened after that charade that went on that night, okay? I don't know where that stands. I don't know if that's something that if it did happen, would save our county money, okay? One gentleman made a good point. Let's hire more maintenance workers, but we can't get parts for them to work with. Therefore, let's put them on the payroll, okay? I don't know why, okay? We have these employees around, maybe we're paying them too much money, okay? Teachers, we have a county where we're building, we're growing, we see all these houses coming. I don't know, maybe those people are going to have kids. Maybe they're going to need to put them in school. Maybe they're going to need teachers to teach them. I don't know, are we going to, at that point, are we going to wait? Oh, let's see what's left over, and let's pick up those. We talked about substitute teachers, I don't know how it works, okay? But we're going to, you know, here we are, you know, backwoods King George here, we're going to end up with whatever there. The assessments, okay? You know, that's the whole gist of this. We're all complaining about our tax rate. My assessment went up 54%, okay? I see the county, on an average, went up 34. I don't know what the heck happened to my house, but, you know, it hasn't changed at all. If our assessment, like one gentleman again said, there's a, you know, some company down in southwest Virginia flew some drones over someplace and came up with some numbers, and then we're all told, oh, we can go to a Board of Equalization. I'm not sure what that is, okay? I tried my best, but I didn't do it, okay? Because I didn't have the time. If our assessments were realistic, I don't think we'd be complaining as much about increases in our tax rate. Maybe we could provide that $2 million that people are looking for, for the schools there. We find, when one woman said about, oh, we got our cigarette taxes, we've got up $2 million now, whatever the running thing is, I don't know if there's a board here, but, you know, we still have another half a year. Do we find money in that to help, you know, fund this, so we can make more people happy, okay? I appreciate what you're all doing. This is off the cuff. I just listen to what I hear here, and, you know, hopefully we all make the right decision, just not for today, but forever, okay? Let's take care of the kids, take care of the people that take care of the kids, okay? Again, ladies, thanks, okay? I appreciate it. Sorry if I went over.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Hart, welcome back.
Good evening. I wasn't planning on speaking on this subject. Judy Hart, 7558 Musco Place. I'm here as a citizen right now and a parent. Grew up here, went to the school system here, our children went to the school system here. If 68 cents per $100 of the assessed value on real estate would provide the schools with the monies that they need, I say let's do that. My daughter has spent... My daughter's been a middle school math teacher in Rockingham County for 11 years. This year, her and her family are moving back home, thank you, Lord, and she will be a teacher at the middle school. And a lot of what the teachers have been saying, I have heard from her, her experience in her school, not enough time to eat, have to watch over children, take over other classes. So I know what it is they're going through. So I say we fully fund the King George school systems. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hart. Anyone else? Going once, going twice? Okay, moving online. Mr. Dines, I guess Ms. Parks is still online? Go ahead, Ms. Park.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board and county residents. My name is Susan Park, and I'm the parent of two children who attend King George County Schools. I've also been actively involved as a volunteer and currently serve as the president of the King George Elementary School PTA. Of 133 Virginia localities, King George County ranks sixth lowest in the state for per pupil investment. And when compared with schools with similar numbers of students and local composite indexes, King George invests the very least per pupil. This should not be. I know King George families value our schools and recognize the importance of what our teachers and staff do. Whether our children enter college or move directly into the workforce after high school, we know that they will need the highest quality education in order to succeed and become productive members of our society. Underfunding our schools means limiting our children's futures. It means losing wonderful teachers to higher-paying neighboring localities. It means long-term uncredentialed subs instead of professional teachers in our classrooms. It means school counselors and social workers covering too many students with too few staff. Student mental health issues are on the rise and have been since before COVID, and like it or not, our teachers and staff are on the front lines. So please, I'm asking you to reconsider your decision to underfund our schools this year and fully fund the school budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Park. Mr. Baird?
Yes, can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
This is Bob Baird, 15316 Kings Highway, King George, in the Shallow District. I was 1971 graduate of King George High School, and the education I received at King George has held me in good stead throughout my business career. I have been lucky enough to have been an adult instructor in career in technical education for over 25 years, so I'm somewhat familiar with the teaching arena. I would recommend that we fully fund the education budget of King George County Schools because it provides the foundation for success for the young people of our county and for our county itself. As chairman of the King George Equalization Board, I know well the pain that is being inflicted on our citizens by our reassessments, and I'm aware of the impact it's going to have on us as taxpayers. But we need to invest in the future, and I encourage you to fully fund the budget.
Thank you, Mr. Baird. Anyone else? Mr. Dines? Did anybody receive any written statements? Ms. Kupko?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I am not going to read every one word for word, however, I will summarize and indicate the citizen's general position, and then I will provide them to the clerk to have them entered into the record of the meeting. The first one is from Janine Connolly. She's a fourth-grade teacher at Potomac Elementary School. She's been teaching there 16 years, and she has a daughter at the high school. She lives in Fredericksburg, but she commutes 40 minutes to and from to teach in Dahlgren. She appeals to us today as a parent and employee of King George County, please fund the requested school budget 100%. As a single mom, a representative on the VD, Virginia Department of Education Advisory Board, various VDOE committees, she represents our county and our schools in Virginia in various aspects throughout the state. And generally, bottom line is, again, I appeal to you today, fully fund our school budget, consider who you are affecting, not just us teachers, but your constituents' families, and especially the students. Thank you for your time and consideration. The next one is from Mr. Brian Greagan, and as he has spoken, I will just enter it into the record. He, again, is in support of $21.4 million. The next one is from Barbara Anderson, a teacher at King George High School for 23 years. I love teaching here, however, I am looking to teach in Stafford County, where they will pay me $15,000 more per year. Why should I stay here? And another speaker this evening has elaborated on some of the things that other communities, other school boards are offering that our community is not. The next one is Melissa Moody. Wanted to send you a quick message reminding you what's at stake when funding our school budget fully. Our classes are already overcrowded, we haven't been able to add new positions for about three years. The journalism class may be dropped from the schedule due to lack of staffing. King George is not a poor, struggling county, and she is the library media specialist at King George High School. And the last one that I have is Florence Elizabeth McDonald. Lives on Mill Flats Lane in King George, retired, living on a fixed income, but I also know that over time, life always costs more. Seems that the amount of our tax dollars intended to go to our schools is currently a big debate. We should all expect schools to cost more than they have in the past just to be able to continue as they are. So regardless of which formulas are haggled over to get there, please don't squeeze our schools till they break. During, while I was in attendance at the Service Authority meeting, I believe we all did receive another email, and that individual did speak here this evening, so I won't read that one aloud. That ends the written correspondence that I have received over the course of the last several days with regard to the public hearing. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. No one else?
Mr. Chair, before you close the public hearing, this is not written correspondence, however, I would like it entered into the record. Sorry, I made copies for everyone. I would like this entered into the record of the public hearing, and I have a copy for every one of my colleagues. I hope you will take it with you, because we know we cannot take any action tonight. We have to wait a minimum of seven days per state code before adopting a budget after the public hearing. But I ran a search today, at 2:47 PM today, on the King George County School District Job Board, there were 41 different open positions, and my guess, and it's just a guess, is that there probably are more than 41 openings currently. One position gets listed, to my understanding, from having worked in the schools for four years and been a long-term sub for two more years, is that a position can be listed as, say, King George Elementary School, elementary school teacher. And that may not be for just one teacher. They can use that opening to hire as many teachers at King George Elementary School as they need. So I would suggest to you, just as of today, we have more than 41 openings right now, so I'm going to pass a copy of this to each of you. And Mr. Collins, would you hand this to the clerk so it gets entered into the record of the public hearing? Thank you. And then the second thing I would like to enter into the record of the public hearing, I reached out to the superintendent's office a few weeks ago because I had heard that there were claims that the school board gets money from the county with intention to fill positions, and then those positions maybe aren't filled. I received some data. I received some data with regard to vacancies as of September 20th of 2021. So this would be efforts to fill positions that the county provided the school board with money for the budget year that started last July. So that money, those positions, the school board office, and I see some of the HR staff here tonight, work throughout the summer to try to fill as many of those funded positions as they can. And so as of September 20th, which was about a month out from the start of school, I was provided a list of what positions, where they work, whether they were filled or not, and notes. And I want to make a point, first of all, the ones that are still white under status as of about a month ago when I asked for this, were still vacant. The ones that are green are filled. The ones that are yellow are filled temporarily. I want everyone to take a good, hard look at how many are filled, either filled temporarily or filled LTS, which means a long-term sub, and how many of them have notes behind it in parentheses that say "not seeking licensure." Here is a copy for each of my colleagues for your consideration. And Mr. Collins, if you would give that to Mr. Miller to enter into the public hearing. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Kupko. I will now close public comment. All right, board members, have any questions or anything that you would like to say or discuss?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to see if there's consensus from the board for another work session, perhaps next week, at some point in advance of our first regularly scheduled meeting in June. Thank you all for your consideration.
I think that makes a lot of sense that next week would work. And do, any other days should be fine for me.
Could we not be on Wednesdays, please?
Tuesday?
And Ms. Bender and I have GWRC meetings on Mondays.
Mr. Collins, you said not Wednesday? Okay.
Tuesday?
Next Tuesday?
Which day is that calendar date?
That'd be the 24th. I believe this... Is the YMCA done by six? If not, then we would have to do it at the fire station or library or even the sheriff's office.
May I answer his question with regard to the YMCA? It's my understanding, I'm on the YMCA board, they have secured use of the boardroom next Tuesday for strategic planning all day. I signed up for, I believe, the 3:30 to 5:00 slot, and I thought that was the last slot. I just do not remember off the top of my head if they needed the room after 5:00 o'clock or not.
We do Thursday.
How about just Tuesday at the firehouse? If we can get that, sir. Tuesday? 6:00?
Is 6:00 fine? Or do you want to do it at your regular time of 6:30?
What's that, Mr. Dines?
We could check the library.
Sheriff Giles indicated that his facility is open as well, which did accommodate the service authority. It's a very fine setup.
Okay, use the multipurpose room Tuesday, 6:00?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Sheriff. Okay.
Tuesday?
Tuesday, 6:00, multipurpose room, sheriff's office.
Thank you.
Okay, let's see, where are we at? All right, moving on from the public hearing. Moving on to 512. Is Mr. Minor here for a presentation?
Thank you.
He is in the, I know he's in the building. I guess here he comes right now. So, Mr. Chairman, this is the, just an update on where we are, where we stand on the second industrial park. I think we talked about this. It's my understanding, and Ms. Lackey can comment on this, but we had Ms. Lackey issue the Phase 1 environmental to you all individually. And then what we wanted to do tonight is just talk to you about what our proposal is. It's our proposal that this be a, obviously, another industrial park. We know that there's been, you know, there has been interest in this site in the past. And, you know, our proposal is a little different this time. It's that we want to have the county go through the whole process of developing this park in terms of subdividing it or, you know, laying out lots and things like that, rather than turning this over to a private business at this point. And so there is some things involved in rezoning. And Nick is going to talk about where he stands on it with it right now and just give you an idea of where we stand and, you know, kind of a timeframe.
Thank you, Ms. Miller, and thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the board. So the first thing I would like to provide the board this evening is just a quick Virginia site development and go over the VDP tier system. There we go. So Tier 1 requires agreeable ownership, essentially to identify a site. And you have the property owner who is willing to allow you to market that site. So if you go to the VDP website and you go to the site search, you'll see there's a handful of properties within the county that I'll market for economic development. Nothing is put on that state website without the owner giving me the green light. Tier 2 is what's called price or control and also allowing for it to be developed within the comp plan. So if you have that aligned, you can also move forward with your preliminary site evaluation and then also get the property under control. Under control could be under option or having a formal agreement with that property owner that they will not, if we go through the process of adding it to a comp plan, that they will not sell this property for any other reason other than economic development purposes or until the end of that contract or agreement. Tier 3 means that the property is already zoned and that you have your due diligence completed, and you also have cost estimates associated with that site. Tier 4 is when you have your infrastructure is delivered on the site or can be delivered within 12 months. And Tier 5 is obviously shovel-ready or pad-ready for that site. The site we're looking at this evening is the bus garage property that is currently zoned C2, right off of 301. So summary of transportation access. So as far as local access goes, it's directly off of Route 301. It's also four-lane access to Route 301, but there's no rail access. So that does limit us on the rail side of it. But for transportation purposes, logistics purposes, this is a great location to start a new business park in the county. So there are minimal site constraints here. The line of sight, well, we need a second entrance or probably will require a second entrance. There's not really a good line of sight as to where we're looking at right now. There is a bit of a resource protection area on this property, as well as the adjacent ones. There's a great tree line buffer. So to keep that, to keep low visibility from the road, which I believe the community wants. And the adjacent parcels to this property are already zoned industrial and commercial. Currently, there's no public water and sewer at the property, but it is less than a mile away, which sort of makes it ideal for future development. And it's not currently zoned. While C2 does help us, it's not currently zoned for its highest investment use. So a summary of the site features and the sector suitability. So we currently are looking at 499 acres owned by the county. There's potential to get to 288 just south of that parcel. There's three-phase power there, and there can be broadband redundancy there. So what I provided you guys here is actually a matrix that VDP provided the county when we looked at the King George Industrial Park. So the suitability is based off of our workforce and our location. So for this site, this particular site, given what we have as far as buildable acreage, I am guessing, until we get our due diligence from SDI, I'm guessing we'll probably have anywhere between 100 to 125 buildable acres. So we're probably looking at projects where we have at least 50 acres or less. So what does that qualify us for, this potential industrial park or business park? So essentially, advanced manufacturing at a small scale, light manufacturing at a small scale, logistics could be at a large scale, and then logistics at a small scale. And the industries that they've identified for us in particular are advanced manufacturing or advanced materials, defense and aerospace, wood products, food and beverage processing. And I know it says highly suitable. Until we get water and sewer there, I don't think the food and beverage will be very highly suitable. But since it's less than a mile away, I think we have a good chance of landing a project in that area. So distribution, the online retailers, your Amazons and such, and then your like, your smaller logistics projects. So the current permitted uses under C2, obviously, the things that we've laid out in the suitability on this slide don't really fall within here. The only really significant investment we could potentially get under our current C2 zoning is where we have data centers that are allowable under a special exception. The other projects, as far as the mini warehouse, that could potentially work. Manufactured home dwellings and modular homes, sales, maybe. But the rest really don't fall within. C2 can really help us develop this park the correct way. So my estimated tier assignment for this potential property and the ones below it are somewhere around Tier 2 to Tier 1. So the property that we have is currently in the comp plan. We own that property, so obviously, we're agreeable to marketing it. And then the properties are partially controlled as far as the ones that we have, and then the adjacent landowners to the south of us. And we have a partial due diligence done with an environmental assessment, Phase 1. We already have our commercial entrance, and we have the majority of the utilities that we need and the infrastructure as far as transportation is concerned. So the current status that we are on this right now, we have our due diligence report, not our due diligence report, our proposal from SDI. They're going to prepare due diligence consulting, environmental consulting, and a conceptual layout. The total cost that they provided this is about $16,000. And we cannot apply, and I added this down here because there are programs that the state provides us that requires matching funds. We cannot apply for those state funds until we get to 100 contiguous acres. So we need to hit that threshold. For Go Virginia, it might be a little bit different. But for the State Virginia Business Ready Site Program, they require 100 contiguous acres if you want to grab the grant fund. So this is an example of the work. So this is the layout that VDP provided us for the industrial park. So basically, giving us the topography, what a 200,000-square-foot building would look like, 175, 75, 75, 135, 135. They added parking, and then also the stormwater management ponds as well for them. So we would assume to receive something like this from SDI. So proposed work and next steps. One thing I didn't add up here, I'll go over the rest of this, but the major part of this is trying to identify a funding source. So I would need to get, I need to get together with the county engineer as well as Ms. Hahn to discuss where we're going to potentially fund this from. So going over for next steps for our new business park, if we do intend to pursue it, we need to have the other sites under control at some point. We do need to rezone to either light industrial or industrial and then identify what those future uses for that park could be, whether it's a tech park, a business park, or that industrial park. I'm just trying to lay out some examples of what we currently have and then what we could potentially go after in the future. And then I just gave the board just an estimated cost of other due diligence that we could potentially pursue. They don't, it doesn't have to be done in any particular order, but all of these will have to be done at some point, either by us, excuse me, either by us or the business. So the more work we do upfront, the quicker it is for the business. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Minor. Questions?
I just want to clarify to make sure that we still are keeping that spot for the Shiloh Fire Station in the front.
So I did talk to Chief Moody about that, and we are going to go over what they have as far as conceptual. I think they're looking at about six to seven acres on that site. And I think there's more than enough space on a 49-acre parcel to at least carve out some for them. And then we can still develop either the back half or the adjacent parcels that we have, that we're working with the property owners on.
Well, thank you. I just want to make sure because that's very important, especially to the Shiloh residents.
Yes, ma'am. Definitely taking him under consideration. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Could you please, someone please email this presentation to all of us?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Anything further, Mr. Collins? Anything? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Minor.
Thank you.
All right, we struck that one off. Moving on to 513, Action Item, Department of Fire Rescue Emergency Services. Chief Lynn?
Yeah. Thanks for talking to us. And we have a question for the presentation. I've got an interesting question for you. I'm going to 9:00.
But I'd be happy to repeat anything or answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Chief Lynn? All right. Thank you, Chief Lynn. So we have a motion.
I move to adopt the twenty twenty-two King George County Emergency Operations Plan as presented.
Second.
We have a motion properly seconded in discussion. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion passes. Thank you, Chief. And if we could just take a five-minute break? Okay. All right, I'll call us back into session here. Mr. Minor, aye again.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tourism funding application for the sixty-third King George County Fall Festival for twenty twenty-two. King George Fall Festival celebrates its sixty-third year. It is an annual event held the second week of October. It is a fun and free event for the community and its visitors. The Fall Festival includes a parade through King George's downtown from King George Elementary School to the King George High School. It also includes a craft vendor and food fair, a queen pageant, a scarecrow contest in weeks before, a car show, and a, and a five K race slash run. Games and rides are provided free of charge to the public. King George Fall Festival supports tourism by bringing people into the community. This increases sales in local businesses, especially those near the high school. Craft vendors as well as family from out of town stay-in hotels. The KGFF weekend is traditionally used for class and family reunions. The KGFF committee is made up of volunteers from various nonprofit organizations in King George as well as local businesses. This includes KG Worritons, Dogland Lions Club, KG Decker, KG Optimus, and KG Volunteer Fire and Rescue, to name a few. King George Fall Festival is requesting nineteen thousand fifty dollars. Uh, the recommended action from TAC, after review, TAC recommends that the BOS approve nineteen thousand fifty funding from the King, for the King George County Fall Festival. The staff does agree with the TAC recommendations.
Any questions for Mr. Minor?
Was, do you remember what the amount was last year?
Yes, sir. It was twenty-three thousand dollars.
Do you know what the delta was?
Sorry?
Do you know what the delta is?
Mr. Chairman, ask a question.
Sure.
So from the tourism fund, is this to come from the fiscal year allocation, the eighty-two or whatever thousand dollars, or from the fund balance?
So ma'am, we could, they would not get their check until July one. That's only.
We could do it after. That was going to be my next question. Can we, would it be possible to do it after, are they going to have enough time to secure the contracts that they need to if we did this after July one?
I did not ask that question to them. I apologize. I don't have that information.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Miller?
I'll just ask Ms. Hahn, is it possible that if you had to spend this out of, uh, those funds before the night, the, excuse me, before July one, we could then reimburse the funds in the twenty-two, twenty-three?
So we could, you pull it from the fund balance, which, anything that he doesn't spend this year rolls into that. So, you know, if it's not really a reimbursement, it would just come from the fund balance.
All right, thank you.
If there's anything to add, Chairman, um, last year, I believe they submitted the application in June, and that, and that did come out of that fiscal year, that new fiscal year, so.
All right, no more questions? Do we have a motion?
I'll just ask Ms. Cupca, were you entertaining saying, hold off on making the approval if, if you want to move forward with the proposal?
Uh, no, not at all. I just was making sure in our motion, if we had to identify a funding source, we did the right one.
Unbalanced, so in this situation.
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay.
All right, is there a motion?
I'll move to approve nineteen thousand fifty dollars in funding for the King George Fall Festival, uh, as of right now, from the fund balance. Uh, the tourism fund balance, yes, sorry. Tourism fund balance.
We have a motion properly whispered and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, no discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Chair votes aye, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Minor. Uh, moving on to uh, five fifteen, Department of Finance, award of construction service agreement for the Ralph Bunch High School single ply roof installation roof project. Ms. Turner, how are you?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, and Mr. Miller. I'm Angela Turner, procurement specialist. Uh, here before you today to ask for an award of construction service agreement for the Ralph Bunch High School single ply roof installation project. On April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two, bids were received and publicly open for the Ralph Bunch High School Single Ply Roof Installation Project. A total of six bids were received. A bid tabulation is attached. A low bid for the high school roof in the amount of four hundred seventy-nine thousand seven hundred dollars was submitted by Old Dominion Roofing. The project includes an installation of a EPDM ethylene propylene thin monomor synthetic rubber roof system. A twenty-year no-dollar limit watertight warranty is included with the bid. The bid form also included a bid item for a new roof for an adjacent maintenance building. Staff recommends that the replacement of the maintenance building roof not be awarded at the county, not be awarded as the county is in the process of preparing a giant, a grant application for additional work to the Ralph Bunch property that will include replacement of the maintenance building roof. This project would be funded through the National Park Service African American Civil Rights Grant Program Award the county received in July twenty twenty-one for the Ralph Bunch High School Preservation Project Phase One. The grant only applies to the high school building and not the maintenance building. Staff recommends that the Board of Supervisors authorize the county administrator to issue a notice of award to Old Dominion Roofing for the Ralph Bunch High School Single Ply Roof Installation Project in the amount of four hundred seventy-nine thousand seven hundred dollars, and authorize the county administrator to execute a construction service agreement with Old Dominion Roofing in the amount of four hundred seventy-nine thousand seven hundred dollars, subject to approval as to form by the county attorney. Staff also recommend that the Board of Supervisors establish the project budget as follows. Construction agreement, Old Dominion Roofing, four hundred seventy-nine thousand seven hundred dollars. Engineering and inspections, twenty-three thousand five hundred dollars. Project contingency of twenty-four thousand eight hundred dollars, with a total project budget of five hundred twenty-eight thousand dollars. The additional two, twenty-eight thousand dollars would be appropriated from the capital fund.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Any questions? Okay. Seeing no questions, do we have a motion?
I move to authorize the county administrator to take the following actions. Issue a notice of award to Old Dominion Roofing for the Ralph Bunch High School Single Ply Roof Installation Project in the amount of four hundred and seventy-nine thousand seven hundred dollars. Authorize the county administrator to execute a construction service agreement with Old Dominion Roofing in the amount of four hundred seventy-nine thousand seven hundred dollars, subject to approval as to form by the county attorney. Establish a project budget for the Ralph Bunch High School Single Ply Roof Installation Project in the amount of five hundred twenty-eight thousand dollars. Appropriate additional funding in the amount of twenty-eight thousand dollars from the capital fund as presented.
Second.
We have a motion properly seconded. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Turner. Uh, moving on to five sixteen, Department of Finance, authorization to enter into an agreement to upgrade security locks for King George Administration Building.
Yes, the authorization to enter into an agreement to upgrade security locks for King George Administration Building. The fiscal year twenty twenty-two capital improvement project budget includes funding for the purchase of security locks upgrades for the King George Administration Building. Staff has determined the best method for this procurement is through cooperative purchasing using Sourcewell Cooperative Contract number zero three zero four twenty-one dash SCS with Stanley Convergent Security Solutions, Inc. County attorney has confirmed Sourcewell is a valid cooperative agreement.
All right, thank you. Any questions? Okay, we have a motion?
I move to authorize the county administrator to take the following actions. Authorize the county administrator to issue a purchase order in the amount of three hundred forty-one thousand eight hundred fifty-three dollars to Stanley Convergent Security Solutions Incorporated. Appropriate additional funding in the amount of thirty-eight thousand nine hundred seventy-seven dollars from the capital fund as presented.
Second.
We have a motion properly seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion passes. Thank you. Okay, moving on to five seventeen, Mrs. Lackey, proposed memorandum of agreement for relocation of Confederate Monument to Historyland Memorial Park.
So the next few agenda items are, um, kind of steps to a process to achieve the finalization of the relocation of the monument or the memorial, which you all will recall, you voted at the end of November to relocate the memorial. The law provides for, um, a, a step-by-step process. After voting to relocate the memorial, you were obligated to um, make that monument or memorial available for proposals for, um, possible recipients of the memorial for its relocation. Um, the law specifically specifies, um, certain types of recipients, museums, historical societies, government, or military battlefield. Um, you can also broaden that request, so notice was posted on the county website in excess of thirty days seeking proposals. Uh, Mr. Miller got one inquiry, but it was outside of the county. It did not involve any funding for relocation. Uh, we did get, um, interest from within the county from Historyland Memorial Park was willing to have the monument relocated to, um, its cemetery. And so before you, the first piece of the relocation action, um, subject to the will of the board, would be to relocate the monument, and both ownership and maintenance of the monument would then go to Historyland Memorial Park. There are terms in the agreement that specify that the monument has to be, uh, treated similarly to other monuments. It can't be obscured, it can't be defaced. And if, if sometime in the future, if there's an unforeseen event and it's damaged, or for some reason it needs to be further moved, notice would have to be given to the county of, of at least a hundred and twenty days, and the county would have the right, but not the obligation, to either restore or further relocate the monument.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Lackey. Do we have a motion? Oh, any questions for Mrs. Lackey? I'm sorry, Mrs. Bender?
If I can get it out, I called Ms. Lackey earlier today to ask you this. I just wanted to clarify in record. The, the agreement is Historyland will pay for the upkeep and making sure that it is maintained, and if any repairs need to be done, correct?
Right, it would advocate Historyland to maintain it on the same level as any other memorials or monuments in the cemetery.
And that's at their expense, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No.
Okay. All right, do we have a motion?
I move to approve the MOA as presented.
Um, friendly amendment?
Sure.
Can we just make sure in the first sentence, it's actually typed in March? Just make sure typographically that gets changed to May. Obviously, it would be, because you would fill the date in everywhere else, the current date for tonight, but. but I just want to make sure that we don't end up with a typographical error, because it looks like Mr. Stork, on his part, actually executed or signed this on March fourth, twenty twenty-two.
I would move to amend my, uh, motion to make a modification to the memorandum of agreement to identify the, the month of May in the first sentence, as opposed to March, per Ms. Kupka's advice.
Second.
We have a motion properly seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Chair votes aye, motion passes. All right, five eighteen, proposal for financing the removal and relocation of Confederate Monument.
And I can go ahead and take a stab at, um, presenting this item. This involves multiple staff members. So there is a, a anonymous donor who is willing to partially fund the cost of the relocation of the monument. The next item on the agenda, as you can see ahead, is to award a, a construction services agreement for the relocation of the monument. Um, this is a bit time-sensitive because it's a bit of a stale procurement, um, that the vendors actually extended the deadline multiple times to hold it for us. So we definitely appreciate the efforts of, um, the citizenry to raise funds for moving the memorial, but there's only partial funding available. However, the TAC, the Tourism Advisory Committee, was consulted about using some of the tourism tax revenue toward the purpose of moving the monument, with the objective of the monument, um, also having signage in aligning it, if not to the Civil War Trail, to having similar designated historical signage. So the items involved in this action are to accept and appropriate any donated funds from an anonymous donor for the purpose of funding the monument and amending the budget accordingly. And the second proposed item would be the appropriation of tourism funds for the purpose of funding the balance of relocation of the monument and posting signage, um, similar to the Civil War Trail.
Mr. Chairman, if I could also add on to that?
Go ahead.
So at the last, the, the, the TAC committee had a, had a meeting, I guess it was last Wednesday. Um, and they voted unanimous, unanimously, I can't talk, um, to, um, allocate forty-one thousand, up to forty-one thousand, uh, to cover the relocation of the monument to Historyland. Uh, it was explained that there was a possibility of an anonymous donor up to ten thousand dollars, and so they agreed that, you know, obviously, if that is produced, then the number would come down, and it would only be like thirty-one thousand, obviously, so. Uh, but it was a unanimous decision of the, um, of the Tourism Advisory Committee to go ahead and authorize the use of those, um, TAC funds.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
Uh, I do have a question, so for the staff recommendations, we don't have the actual numbers to know what would need to come from, for, uh, accepting donated funds as well as the, um, uh, amount that would need to be appropriated from the tourism fund balance.
So our recommendation would be, uh, forty-one thousand, and then if the ten thousand is actually received, then, you know, we would obviously put that back in.
Okay.
So it would be up to forty-one thousand, not to exceed. And then, of course, if you got to ten thousand dollars, then you would only be spending thirty-one thousand.
Understood. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I ask a question as well.
Go ahead.
So the amount required to satisfy the contract in the next item is thirty-eight thousand dollars? So is it proposed that depending on the delta with whatever is donated, the other three thousand dollars could be used for signage? Was that tax recommendation?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, no more questions. Do we have a motion?
Uh, I move to fund the relocation of the monument and post, and posting of signage, uh, by accepting and appropriating donated funds from an anonymous donor for the purpose of funding the relocation of the Confederate Monument and amending the budget accordingly, and appropriating up to, but not to exceed forty-one thousand dollars from the tourism fund balance for the purpose of the relocation of the Confederate Monument, posting signs, and amending the budget accordingly, with any excess funds to be deposited back into the tourism fund balance.
Second.
We have a motion properly seconded. Ms., yes, Ms. Han, you, you're trying to correct us.
Okay, so right now, we can't really accept and appropriate donated funds that we don't know how much they're going to be um, in order to keep the, um, books
Clean.
Clean for the, for the county. Right now, the motion should just be to authorize the, um, use of the TAC fund balance for the contract, and when we do get the donated funds, then we would need to come back and
Adopt, yes, okay, and accept that funds, okay. So I would like to make a motion to amend my motion, uh, to strike the first uh, part of accepting and appropriating donated funds from an anonymous donor for the purpose of funding the relocation of the Confederate Monument and amending the budget accordingly.
I'd like to make an amendment to that motion. It would be to accept, um, to do thirty-one thousand, um, from the TAC fund as the motion.
So I made a motion to be, I, I'm going to ask you if it would be, uh, I'll leave it up to them, everyone, if they want to.
So I wished to second Mr. Granger's corrected motion.
Okay, we have a motion properly seconded. Now we can open for discussion. Mr. Collins?
Amendment to thirty-one thousand from the TAC fund as the motion. Amendment to the motion.
Okay. Mrs. Bender?
I just want to make a comment now. Um, the, the only heartache I have is using pro- public tourism money when it was promised that this would all be donated money back in November, and that's where my heartache, I can't talk anymore. Sorry, that's where my problem comes in, is using public funds. Thank you.
Unfortunately, the, the stated funds back in November didn't, they had, uh, issues of, of raising that entire amount. So that's what, uh, that's what happened with that.
Mr. Chair, I, I would like to state for the record that the November Board Action, a vote of three to two, was to move the Confederate Memorial, was, there was no funding source identified at that time, and there was no promise of a donation at the time that the action was taken to relocate the memorial. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Point of clarification, it was stated at a later meeting that there was funds to do so, so that is where, that is my point of comment. Thank you.
Okay, any further?
So how about the amendment? Is there a second or not?
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays?
Nay.
Nay.
Chair votes aye, motion passes. Okay, uh, next up, five nineteen, Department of Finance, award of a construction service agreement for the removal and relocation of the Confederate Civil War Monument. Ms. Turner?
At the Board of Supervisors meeting on November twenty-third, twenty twenty-one, the Board of Supervisors approved to remove and relocate the Confederate Civil War Monument. In June twenty twenty-one, a request for proposals were issued, and on July twenty-first, twenty twenty-one, a proposal was received in response to RFP oh-seven-twenty-one, twenty twenty-one dash fourteen-hundred for the removal and relocation of Confederate Civil War Monument. The proposal was evaluated by a selection committee consisting of Travis Quezenberry, Vic Mason, Mike Muncie, and Rick Hare. An interview was held on September eighth, twenty twenty-one. The evaluation committee ranked Stratified Inc. as qualified contractor for this project. The Confederate Civil War Monument will be placed at Historyland Memorial Park, located at one-one-two-two-seven James Madison Parkway, King George, Virginia, two-two-four-eight-five. This project will be funded by tourism.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Any questions?
I did have one question I asked Mr. Miller earlier about this, is, um,
I can, I can ask it for you. Um, Ms. Bender asked me, did the, um, the proposal include the fact that they had visited the site? And it's my understanding from Ms. Turner that they did visit the site prior to submitting their proposal. Um, so there isn't, there is knowledge about it.
Thank you. Why I ask that is just to make sure that the price was correct for the bid, that if they
Yes, he, uh, it's my understanding that, so there has been several extensions voluntarily on their part. They have not changed the price. Um, you know, I think it is thirty-eight thousand is what their proposal is.
Okay. No further? Do we have a motion?
I'll move to authorize the county administrator to issue a notice of award to Stratified Inc. in the amount of thirty-eight thousand dollars. And I further move to authorize the county administrator to execute a construction services agreement with Stratified Incorporated in the amount of thirty-eight thousand dollars, subject to the approval of the county attorney.
Second.
We have a motion properly seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Hearing none, chair votes aye, motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Turner. Um, moving on, five twenty-one, county administrators' report.
All right, so, um, I am, uh, under a time limit, which I will get you out of here in very quick order. Um, so a couple of items, let me skip to the real easy ones, and then I'll jump on the bigger one, but, um, so we're already taking care of the work session on the twenty-fourth for the budget. If you're willing, I've had a conversation with Captain Copeland and his, uh, his staff. Um, they are going through what potentially could be a pretty serious situation with a lot of civilian folks that are on base that, because of the way the, the military priority system works, and obviously, Mr. Granger can speak to this as well, and I know that Mr. Stonehill had a conversation similar to this with, with Captain Copeland. Um, they are subject to possibly fifty families or more, fifty-two possibly, that will be forced out of the base housing that are civilians. And they've lived there, in some cases, many, many years. And, um, their issue is, I think his concern is, he wants to have an honest conversation with you about housing. What can we do about, you know, that entry-level type housing? There is a, a real, um, lack of that available for that, you know, for some of these incoming y- young people that might have a family or might even be single. And so what they're having to do is obviously make choices. His concern is that, at some point, is the, is the Department of Defense, and specifically the, the, the U.S. Navy, going to start making decisions about mission? And, you know, does it, does it affect future missions, or does it affect the current missions? Um, because it, there really is an issue with, you know, uh, keeping kids here, keeping folks here. And so I think he just wants to have that conversation. So, um, if you wanted to do the budget, I know that's the primary focus. Uh, we could have him come in afterwards, or have him come first and be real quick. Or, you know, let him co- let Captain Copeland come to that, to your, a future meeting, a f- future regular for supervisors' meeting, and let him make a presentation. But I, I just, you know, to me, it was, it was something that would be a good inter- interchange of, of dialogue, and, um, you know, kind of get creativity, get Ms. Hall involved, Mr. Minor, and myself, and just really sit down and kind of have a conversation about this. So it's your preference. Um, that was before you all wanted to talk about the budget on the twenty-fourth. That's why I put that on there.
Do we want to see if we can get Captain Copeland and crew to come next Tuesday for our budget meeting? Or should we hold that off for the school, just school, and try to get him in on another date?
I guess you get in on another date.
I'm amenable to that.
Yeah, I agree with Mr. Collins, that's too much for
Future work session?
I would say a work session, yeah, not a regular meeting, though.
Right, and that's what I was, okay, is that we have it on a, uh, as you see down there. I'm also proposing, and I think some of people heard me talk about the, uh, this with the service story. You know, if we could get one night of a month where we could kind of try to bring a lot of kind of policy discussions, a lot of issues about, you know, things where you're going to see it, where you might see it multiple times before you make a decision, we can utilize the work session format to, to help that out. And that's, uh, I know Mr. Collins has asked that it not be on Wednesdays, and that's perfectly fine with us. I just put Tuesdays and Wednesdays, but, you know, clearly, the budget process was absorbed a lot of that. So we will definitely, um, you know, think about it, which one you'd want to do. If you're having a meeting on the first and the third Tuesday, then do you want to have it on the second Tuesday? Or you want to have it on the fourth Tuesday to kind of lead off going into the month? So just think of how you wanted to do that.
I don't, I don't know if the second Tuesday is a good day, um.
Planning commission.
Well, you can go anywhere. You can go to the sheriff's department. I, I realize you would like your, your di- your dais.
I'm, I just, I saw oh, I just saw Mr. Dunn, yeah, so.
Okay.
Something to consider, at least.
Okay.
I don't know if we made to make the se- decision tonight. Did we want to try to pick another night, though, for Captain Copeland and company? Would, would my colleagues be willing to entertain the thirty-first of May? There's another Tuesday, it's the fifth Tuesday of the month, um, so it'd be the following Tuesday.
Mr. Chair, may I just ask, is everyone going to be in town? That's the day after Memorial Day, isn't it, May thirty?
That's a fair question, um, so yeah, I'll leave it to my colleagues to decide then.
So your meetings in Tuesday, on your Tuesdays in, in June would be the seventh is your regular meeting. The fourteenth would be the off, but that's the planning commission. And then you'd have the twenty-first, it's a regular meeting, the twenty-eighth. So, I mean, we could, you know, have it somewhere, if you wanted to do that. The other items on there, I don't need an answer tonight. I guess I do need to know, though, I guess, yes, I do need an answer about Copeland, uh, about Captain Copeland.
All right, everybody going to be around on the thirty-first?
We here.
You will not?
I will be.
You would.
That's kind of chancy.
You don't know?
No, I, my daughter will be in town, and, and so I would say no, then.
Is, is that the whole week, or will, the whole, okay, the week of thirtieth through the thir- thirtieth of June, okay.
We could do that specific meeting for Captain Copeland on another night, then, you know, Tuesday or Wednesday, we wouldn't do it on Wednesday, but you could do it on another night, and maybe get it after the first meeting in, in June, so you could maybe do it that next week, like a Thursday, which would be the sixteenth or the fifteenth, oh, the fifteenth is a Wednesday, excuse me. Or the Monday, which would be the thirteenth.
That would, I know Monday would be a problem for me.
Okay.
Uh, I could do the sixteenth, though. Does that work? If, I, obviously, if my colleagues are amenable to that. June sixteenth?
As long as June sixteenth is a Thursday, I can
Is it Thursday, yes.
June sixteen, it's Thursday.
Thursday, June Is it here, or, I don't think so. I, I think Ms. Bender said she'll have to check on it. Could we, at the budget work session next Tuesday, maybe circle, circle back on this if we're looking there?
Yes, sir.
Got to clear up some dates, or everybody, talk about it at the budgets, I guess.
Yes, sir. Um, the only thing that's left, the, the two items, one is update on the courthouse project. So right now, we are working through our, our So right now, we are working through our architect, Mosley, to zero down the, to get to the guaranteed maximum price that Branch builds, which is the ones that we are negotiating with right now, to be our CMAR. There's a big gap right now between what the folks with Mosley's estimates and with where Branch is coming in. We are trying to work through that this week, but just understand, you know, our plan was to be bringing this to you on the seventh for a, you know, a final award and all that, but the inflation and, you know, the lack of materials availability on a timely basis is impacting a lot of what they're trying to accomplish. Which our understanding from Branch that their, that the thirty-day guarantees are about as much as they're getting on their pricing. So we will be meeting this week and trying to wrap this up, and I know that, I know that Vic Mason and Sheriff Giles and Travis Cusenberry want to come and, you know, do a presentation to make sure that, you know, everything is squared away, and so that you understand what's going on, but we are working towards getting that gap filled. But clearly, that's something that I think we will be, hopefully, we'll have some better answers for you next week on the twenty-fourth, you know, so that you can kind of factor that into your decision-making. And the only other item that's on there is just employee anniversaries. I'm not going to go through the list, but if you care to, you know, we do have some folks with some pretty good amount of time, and we had new hires, and we got some transfers, so that's all I have. If there's any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Miller? Okay, I just have one thing, if you all would indulge me, I forgot at our last meeting to a reappointment for a Parks and Rec advisory person, so if I could do that, that was my fault, and he responded back to me just tonight during the meeting, that I would like to reappoint Nathan Ackerman to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, and he is the Dowron rep.
Second.
Motion properly seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, thank you. Now a motion.
I'm in a closed session, right? I move to adjourn until Tuesday, May twenty-fourth, at six P.M., in the multipurpose room at the Sheriff's Office.
Second.
We have motion properly seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, we are adjourned.